I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. And we'll move on to final review of our 2020-2021 school budget.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it right to Lucy.
In front of you, you have several sheets. This has been a very unusual budget year, both on the town side and on the school district side. Normally, we prepare these budgets February, March, and are ready to go April, May. Come March, we basically stopped everything we're doing and we focused on COVID-19 response and kind of set this aside. So when we came back to it in early May or mid-May, we had a different perspective of how to look at this budget. Because now we're not just preparing for the start of the school year that might start and look like every other school year. Now we're looking at different options that we may have to address throughout the school year. So you're gonna see, and then also by having it a little bit later in the year, we now have answers to things that were, that we estimate when we have to prepare earlier, such as health insurance. We now know that we could be increasing health insurance. We know, you know, some of the staffing that has replaced people who are retiring. So there's better information, there's also still some unknowns, and what we're planning for is, we're planning for the, you know, at the end of the day, we get to give these kids, whether they're in school or remotely, this is factored in as if we've got to do, we have no option but to provide 176 school days, the teachers to prepare it, and the buses, the buses and the food to deliver it. So the A sheet gives you a super summary by class center. The Department of Education requires us to report our budgets in a class center format. And the first class center is regular instruction that basically encompasses what happens in the classroom. So your teachers, some ed techs, all your classroom materials, some of your classroom equipment, it's basically, and then gifted and talented is under that umbrella as well. The second class center is special education. Special education encompasses your special education teachers, your ed techs primarily, your special services such as social work, your occupational therapy, physical therapy, those kinds of services that are provided for that population of students. Career and technical education is the third class center. That is what happens at the tech center. The tech center now receives its own ED-279. In previous years, it was under our umbrella as well and cost share. Now they have their own ED-279, and unless they go over what the funding would provide, then we don't have to allocate anything in our budget. Total other activities, that's your co-curricular and extracurricular activities, so your math groups, your student groups, or your student teams, committees, and then also your sports, all your, and the transportation for such. The fifth one is your student and staff support. That is support to, that includes your guidance, your library, your
Nurse.
Your nurse, your technology, and your assessments. So your student assessments falls under there. The next one is system administration. That is your central office and your cost share of the Valley Unified System Administration. The next one is school administration. That's basically your school principal and school office. Your student transportation is basically getting your kids to and from school on buses or in vans if you're transporting specifically for different students. Your facilities is your buildings and grounds. The school lunch program, that line, in this particular version, and I don't know if that's how it was shown in the past, what I like to show is the total cost of the program. And in the revenue sheet we'll look over later on is all the revenues that offset. So that you can see that in 2019, '20, we were, we spent about 370,000, 307,000 towards providing school lunch, where we budgeted as such, and this coming year is 413, and I'll explain why the increase. And the next one is total continuing education. It's not part of the budget per se, but it's a separate entity that falls under the school district. So it's reported, I'm just reporting it here because it's a class center that we have to report on, the funds for it are raised separately in a separate article. And then the very last line is your grand total of the budget, and I've got two lines there. The first line is the total of all the eleven class centers above, and the bottom, very bottom line, I've deducted the continuing ed and school lunch from that number. So that you can see, in this proposed budget, your general budget is looking like a $7,286,132, which is a 5% increase in the expense side of the budget. And we'll go through what that, why the increase and where. So that's sheet A. Sheet D. What I've done is I've taken all the costs throughout the entire budget and I've summarized by groups of expenses. So you see the total salaries that are included in all the eleven class centers. So in this version, and then the second column of numbers is the proposed budget for 2021. So we're proposing spending $4,396,791 in salaries, which is an increase of about $180,000 from prior year, an increase of 4.3%, and it represents 56% of the total budget. I'm, it's not a, it may not be an actual increase in salaries as compared to what exists this year. Sometimes it's an increase that shows up because I'm presenting this differently than in prior years. Some of the costs that we have, for example, if we have a position that's cost shared in the prior year, the revenue to offset that position may have been decreased in the budget as well. So if the position costs $40,000 and you were collecting $20,000 from somewhere else, the budget may have shown $20,000. This year, I'm showing the full $40,000, and I'll show the revenue on the revenue side. What I need from the expense side is, when we're presenting the budget to the locals or to the taxpayers, I need authority to spend everything that I'm gonna have to pay. So all salaries, all bills, all invoices, I need to be able to pay those bills. And the authority on the budget side gives me that. That's why I'm showing the total cost. Because if we invoice in one year, we don't collect until next year, the revenue same comes in July 1st, then I'm showing that I've over expended, and by law, I cannot have a deficit. So I'm preparing as if I need the authority to spend the entire cost, but I'll show the offsetting revenue so it won't be a cost of taxpayers. Total health insurance is $855,886. It's actually a little bit of a decrease. Our health insurance increase this year came out to zero. So we're paying the same in 2020-21 as we did in this current year. Salary benefits include FICA, the retirement, the workers' comp, the unemployment compensation, $525,457, an increase of $17,362. Some of that increase is due to different salaries of different employees that we have. So in the budget last year, we may have had a specific director, a special ed, or a specific teacher. This year is a different person, so the cost is different. And then the rate for workers' comp has changed as well.
Lucy, can I interrupt?
Yes, absolutely.
This sound coming from, I think the owl is not
Is not owl.
really good, so if you want to stand in front of the table?
Okay.
If you've got a message.
I apologize. And feel free to ask questions as I'm going along. The VU ESC assessment, that is the Madawaska cost share for the central office positions that are covered under Valley Unified. The superintendent, assistant superintendent, the director of innovation and practice, myself, and the director of food services, and all the costs associated with us running that little piece of central office, and the Valley Unified Board, and the legal costs, and the stipends for that board. It also includes the finance software and the time clock plus software. There's two, actually, there's two softwares that because we formed a Valley Unified Service Center, the Department of Education actually provided us funding, and they're covering the cost of our financial software. Because what we did is we changed our software and we added databases so that we're all under one umbrella, and we're hosted. So if I'm sitting in Madawaska, or sitting in Fort Kent, or anywhere in between, I can access the software wherever I'm at and be able to function just as if I was in any office. The time clock plus software allows us to have our hourly employees clock in and clock out, and upload that, the hours that they work into our financial software automatically. Previous to this year, Madawaska and Frenchville did not have a time clock system. They had a time sheet system where the employee would actually say, "I worked eight hours today," submit it, and we're paid as such. This actually records the actual time on task. Professional contracts and leasing services, that covers things such as your legal fees, it covers your technology contracts, OT, PT, if we have some of those services, if we don't employ you on hand. So that's what that line. There's an increase of $60,000 in that line, and the legal fees, we currently have a litigation pending with the three school districts at Valley Unified. We don't know what the cost of that is going to be. So what we've done is we've increased the legal fees for Madawaska School District by $20,000, and each other district as well, including Valley Unified. So in this, $20,000 is an increase in legal fees, plus Madawaska's share of the Valley Unified. So there's about 34% of those legal fees that are included in here. And I'll go into a little more detail of what the increases are a little bit later. Travel, professional, and room and board, we've actually decreased that line. We anticipate that we're not gonna be sending too many people anywhere this year. With COVID-19 being so rampant, any professional development that requires travel or meetings will be done through title funds or remotely, through Zoom or through electronic means. So we've reduced that line significantly. Utilities, the primary increase there is electricity. When I looked, when I did an analysis of the last, I always do a two-year and a three-year average, and I look at the current year, the budget that was in last year was not sufficient for what we are spending in electrical costs. Fuel, diesel, oil, and propane, I'd love to say that the costs are going to go down significantly, but my crystal ball doesn't really work that well when it comes to fuel costs. However, it's been through the Madawaska Town, and I was able to reflect the costs. This budget is at the time of year where the bids came in, and we actually know the cost versus us guessing. Repayments of loan and leases, we do have, we've paid off the tractor, and now we have a loan for a truck lease. Capital renewal and borrowing, that is your, it's not pellet, it's
It's the biomass.
The biomass, and we'll, we, throughout the year, we will have an additional one. It'll be a school revolving renovation fund loan for building a vestibule at Madawaska Elementary School. Materials and supplies, that is primarily what happens in the classroom, and our cleaning and, basically our cleaning and maintenance supplies. Equipment and furniture, the increase there is about $48,000. The majority of that is technology equipment. The one thing that we did learn through COVID-19 is that we would not have been able to do the remote learning as successfully as we did because we were so invested in technology. However, we still have some areas that we need to improve, the backbone, we need to make sure our servers are up to date. We also had an incident this year where our data was, not data compromised, but there was an access that we, that we need to make sure that nobody can get in. So we're upgrading our SOFOs, our data security software, and our servers. Meals, lodging, and transportation, that'll go, that is just a small line for the, I think that belongs in the co and extracurricular. Again, we're very minimal. Dues, facilities, and transportation, those are dues for student trips. What we don't know is, usually this line is, covers your transportation for co and extracurricular trips. We don't know that we won't be in classroom next year. So come the fall, we may not have sports in July, but we may have in October, November, December. So we have to plan as if we will be able to do some sports. Student contracted services, your psych, your audio, your occupational therapy, we're leaving at the same level. Career and technical education, that's our share of the cost center of the career and tech center, St. John Valley Tech. This year, there's no need to provide any contribution. Equipment repair and maintenance, that's repairing laptops or anything in the buildings that has technology written on it. We do have an increase in that. Repair and maintenance of the building, there's a small increase, and it's primarily due to a need to repair the roof on the jump. I did add a contingency to the budget. When I looked at this, I was quite surprised in previous years that there was no line for contingency. When your budgets are budgeted so specifically to two different items, you need a place to land in the event that the boiler breaks down or you have a catastrophe and there just is not anything in the budget. So I did, I have a $25,000, which is not much, it's only 0.3% of the budget. Conference workshops and professional developments, and this is primarily a line for course tuition reimbursement for our teachers. Food supplies and school nutrition program. The school nutrition program is a standalone program, and whatever we spend or whatever we collect, we have to, it has to be its own little business type thing. This year specifically, normally we plan for 176 school days, and the kids are onsite, and we're feeding them onsite, and we get reimbursement through state or parents or sales. This year, what we don't know is, will the kids be in school or will we still be delivering? We currently have an extension, what we're, the program that we were approved for, and pretty much required, but strongly encouraged to provide since March 15th, was to actually provide meals to the students when they're on site. And it's not just students, it's anyone from zero, or if they can eat solid food, up until the ages of 18, can take part in our summer food program. It's an extension of the summer food program that we have. It's a smaller, limited menu, we don't, but everything is packaged and delivered, and we've been delivering by bus to their homes. They have a cooler on the side of the road, we drop the meals off. We currently have an extension, it started, and we were extended till the end of the school year, we're now to June 30th, and we now have an extension to August 31st. So we will be providing, we actually started this week, to provide an extension beyond the school year of a food program that we don't typically provide. So three days a week, we're still delivering meals, but it's for a six-day meal service program. So we deliver breakfast and lunch to anyone who has indicated they want meals for students, for kids aged, let's say from 2 to 18. So that, yes?
Now, when you say you were extended, does that mean like this is a grant, or it's money from the state? They cover all of the costs of that program?
They cover
Including the busing and
They reimburse, no, well, as long as we serve enough meals, they will cover it. What it, what it is, and if we don't serve enough meals to cover our costs, then we'll bring it back, we'll make it smaller.
Right now, we're not, we're operating, basically, it's balancing out, so we're not running a deficit. It's federally funded, actually, it's federally funded dollars, and the reimbursement is higher than the regular reimbursement during the school year. So it allows us to hire a few more people, pay for the fuel, and not run it for rent.
Okay, so the increases that are showing here are covered in the revenue side?
Yep. So, yes, and what I've done is, I factored in our regular school program and the costs that we recover for that, and I basically have two little businesses in here. One is the regular food program, in the event that we start back school in August and we're back doing what we normally do. So that will have a small cost going to the local taxpayers, same as we normally would. If we don't do that and we're remote again, then I have another piece where I've added, it's about 14 weeks of costs of providing meals outside of the school year, and I've shown the exact same revenue coming in, so the net effect is zero, but it gives me the authority I need to pay the bills. And so if it costs less, I'll pay less, recover less, but if it costs more, I'll pay more and recover more. So the net effect of that school lunch program will be zero.
Lucy?
Yes?
Is the program needs based?
Nope. It's whoever, whoever wants it. Any child that lives in the area and that can eat solid food up until the age of 18 can get this meal service program. So Ben has sent a survey to the families and to the students. And if someone moves to the area and has kids, and they call in and say, "Hey, I'd like to get meals," we can serve them meals.
That's what we're doing now, right?
That's what we're doing now, yeah. The solar meal program provided that.
There's enough revenue on the other side to offset the cost of running the buses and all of that?
There is now, we had a tremendous participation in this program. Are we up to 175,000 meals?
I think we're just beyond.
We're beyond 175,000 meals served in the three districts since March 16th or 17th. There's a lot of demand.
I believe the reimbursement is $4.15 per meal?
It's an average of three between the breakfast and lunch. Breakfast is a little bit lower, the lunches, I think it's four something. But as long as, because our buses are going along specific routes, and we're living around those routes, our buses are full of meals. If we were to get to, you know, four meals per buses, then we'd have to reevaluate because getting $12 back for a bus run would not be feasible. At that point, we have the option of, instead of doing a delivery from house to house, we have the option of delivering to a site base. So you could go 10 miles out, deliver all the meals in that one area, and have people come and pick them up in that location.
We still have close to 400, 400 meals that are being requested throughout the summer, so we're still
Per day.
We're reducing one bus from Madawaska, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and we can figure out how to get it to the families based on where they're living.
This week is really our evaluation week, because as of last Friday, we finished the school year for the kids being in school type thing. So now we're starting the actual summer meal program, and now we now have our teachers that are off and our school staff, our school base that are off. So they may or may not be interested in food, we may have families that are going on vacation or to the camp. So we sent a separate survey because now their situations at home may have changed, so now we'll get a new count and make a determination based on that new count what we'll provide for service. But so far, there's still a high demand. The sheet with a C, I figured you would want to know what categories of salaries have increased or decreased, so the C is just breaking down that $180,000 increase in the salaries section. When you're comparing these two columns, we're comparing what was budgeted last year to what is budgeted this year. What was budgeted last year was created sometime in February, March of 2019, and the staff that were in place at that time in anticipation that they would be here for the year. So any changes in personnel and any changes in responsibilities are now reflected in the budget for 2020-21. So that $180,000 may not be an actual increase of salaries to an employee or to employees that are currently, they may, they're just the difference between what was budgeted last year to what is needed in the budget for this year. That kind of makes sense. So in the, so for example, the admin group, in that admin group, it reflects an increase of about 3%. Our administrators are not getting a 3% salary increase, they're getting a COLA increase. That's what's factored into this budget. But what was budgeted last year was not sufficient to cover the costs that were in, that were actually expended in this year, and then when I extrapolated to next year, there's a need for $700, $800 more. The board stipends are about the same, bus drivers. When we went, what was, I anticipated this would happen as well. When you're asking an employee to report what they're working, they're not keeping track of 15 minutes here and there that they may, you know, at the end of the day, if they answer a phone call and they're there beyond 3:30, they're not gonna report that they ended at 3:45. They're gonna say, "I worked eight hours today." they're not going to report that they ended at 3:45, they're going to say, I worked eight hours today. But when you're actually clocking in and out and it reflects the time that you're actually onsite, then you're going to find that the majority of your employees may be working more than eight hours a day. You also have some that are not quite working what they should be and then they kind of adjust as you go along. So the, what was budgeted last year was based on an eight hour day regardless of examining what was actually happening. Because we really had no way to track it. But now that we do, we're finding that the hours that were allocated in the budget were not quite sufficient. If the phone rings at 3:30 here, I do expect my secretaries to answer it. I'm not going to tell them, no, you don't answer that phone if it brings at 3:30, don't answer it, you need to walk out. We provide the service and we'll reflect it in the budget accordingly. Your co and extracurricular stipends, that is, that includes some of the coaching. So sometimes your, your coaching or your committees, who is providing that service may not need, may not have the same level of experience, so when I looked at the, at the comparison, we could decrease a bit in that area. Continuing ed salaries, this is an area where the salaries are, are happening, the, the, the people are actually in place and the same people. However, they're subsidized by SAD 27. So the costs that pertain to 27, I'm no longer reporting in, in the expense side. So that's why you're seeing a decrease there. The person didn't really get less money, but it's coming from a different source. Custodians are about the same amount, the hours or in the, in the rate. Ed techs, Grand Isle is actually contributing towards ed techs. So I've reflected all of the salaries for ed techs that are covered by a regular budget. And I'll show in the revenue that we have revenues to offset some of these costs. So it's not, it's not an increase in the costs of salaries, it's just reflecting everybody that's being paid. Food service, that includes the extra time and the extra weeks for summer food program. Guidance, a decrease of 14,000. There might have been a shift in salaries or in, in, sometimes we have an employee that works in two locations and it's just, that employee still may save money, but may work. Instead of this year budgeting for four hours here, there may be three hours here and four hours there. So it's just a shift in, in areas of responsibility.
That food service, the extended summer program, there was an increase there?
I, I'm estimating that I will need a certain amount of people, a certain number of days. And I factored in that amount, that you'll see an offsetting revenue to offset that.
Okay.
Yeah. Secretary is the same idea as the bus drivers is when I looked at the hours. And actually, I think the budget for 1920, one of the secretaries at the elementary school was hired after the fact. So the budget in 1920 didn't really reflect what was actually happening and then this year we're caught up. Oh my gosh, secretary, social work. Social workers are often offset by local entitlement funds. And some years we can cover more in local entitlement funds and some years we can't. It depends on the fluctuations and what else takes priority. So this year, we have to cover more of the social worker through the regular budget than we had planned in previous year. Doesn't mean that social work is getting paid more, it's just coming from a different fund. The special ed director, our part-time special ed director is retiring this year. We've hired a new special ed director slash teacher. She will be a full-time special ed director with, in teaching one class.
And we did not fill a teaching position because of that.
And that will reflect in when you, when we get to the teacher line. Sub custo, your substitute custodians and substitute drivers, we're anticipating to be about the same. Substitute teachers, when I did an, when I did an, an evaluation of how many, how many we used in the last, I always do a two or three year average and I look at the current year and the amount that we had for substitute teachers is not sufficient. And sometimes that is, an employee leaves partway through the year and you hire a substitute teacher, a long-term sub. Or there's a need if, if you have a class size increase, for example, and you don't have enough money to, to hire a full-time teacher, you hire a substitute teacher on the long term. So that's what that line covers. The teacher's line looks like a decrease. We do have two retirees. So the, the, the replacement costs, if we're, if a veteran teacher retires and you hire someone that has less experience, it's less costly and also one of the, one of the positions we're not filling. So it looks like a decrease in cost, which it is in reality, they're not getting less money in their paycheck. And technology technician is getting a COLA increase. So that's a breakdown of the salary changes. D gives you a summary of programs within the cost centers. So in regular instruction, for example, the green line, the first green line, it looks at what happens in the classrooms and the Department of Education requires me to code it in specific groups. So I have to code the teachers and the classroom costs that pertain to grades three to eight in the first grouping. And then I have to keep track of pre-K to grades two in a separate grouping, grades nine to 12 in a separate grouping. And any gifted and talented efforts or programs are in the fourth grouping. So that, I don't know if you want to go through line by line or if the, the summary is, you can, you can pretty much see by grouping if you have any questions. And in the red, I've indicated what either the change, the majority of that, of that change is. For example, in the elementary programs, grades three to eight, there's 24,598 increase of 4%. That is due to staff movement. So a staff was primary, was previously in grades nine to 12 grouping, we're now, that person has moved to grades three to eight. And so the, the health insurance that that person had versus whatnot. So it's, it's that kind of cost that you're, so on the red description, it kind of describes what the differences are. So in that regular instruction, there's a, we're going to go by the green lines and if you have questions, we can go by the programs after. In the regular instruction, there's actually a decrease of about 1%, so $17,000 decrease in that cost center. Special education program is an increase of about 14%. Part of that is the new director of education and from part-time to a full-time status. And also the ed techs that are, will be covered by Grand Isle are in those costs as well. So it's not a true increase per se, it's just showing it differently than in prior year's budget. Career and technical education has no, has a decrease. We had planned on a $500 last year, we didn't need it this year. Other activities, co and extracurricular, are actually a small decrease of about 2%. Student and staff support is an increase of about 113,000, which is 18%. The majority of that, what we've found as well is with the COVID-19, when the students and staff do come back to the buildings. Right now, we're on a, a very limited scope of people allowed into our buildings and when they do come, we make sure that they're socially distanced. When we get to the point where our students and staff come back to the building, either in groups or in, we're going to be required to check symptoms and do the screenings and take temperatures and, and kind of make sure. So right now, we don't have a full-time nurse in Madawaska, so this brings our, our nurse to full-time. So that's an increase of about 11,500. The rest of the areas are decreases except for instruction-related technology. Technology is, is one that we'll have to invest in and that has the server, it has increased equipment, iPads for lower grades. What we're trying to do is gear up in the event that we have a second wave of COVID and that we have to provide, to keep providing our technology to our students.
Are there any, excuse me, are there any grants or anything for any of that technology?
The, the Department of Education is providing, or has made available some units. However, they're, they're not MacBooks, they're not iPads. And we don't have the opportunity to choose what we want. What they're providing is Chromebooks. I don't know if you're familiar with Chromebooks, but our superintendent is not.
It's not just any Chromebook, it's basically the basic, basic model. I think the unit's priced out at $220 each.
It's access to the internet, basically, is all it is.
What is nice, the department has provided some, some wifi hotspots. It's not going to help us in our most remote areas, but if we do have a family that doesn't have internet connectivity or they took advantage of some of the free services that were offered back in March and that will expire. We have some devices, I don't know how many devices we got there, it's 20, 20 devices where we can deploy those and provide internet access grants.
So they're, they're giving you, not money to provide, correct?
We do have some CARES funds that will, that, that are available for the district that we can apply for and we will, at some point, we'll, we'll identify priorities. So these funds are meant to cover any costs over and above what you normally would spend in your, in your school district. And they're specific to the COVID-19 response. So if you have extra costs that were not planned for in your budget and that are specific to the COVID-19, you can apply for these funds and get reimbursed. The Department of Education is strongly advising us that you have to be careful what kind of costs you, you put in there to recover. So if you're taking, you're saying, hey, I'm going to use all my transportation costs that we, that we've used to, to transport the meals and I'm going to apply for that. The danger is, in next year, when they look at the funding levels, you're going to receive less funding for your transportation because you've got these CARES funds. So they're really, they're telling us to really be careful about not taking expenses that you currently have in your school budget and put towards those funds because they will affect your funding levels for next year. We have, I think it's a year and a half, if not two years, to recoup the CARES funding. So we're, we've, we've got a list of priorities that we're identifying as we go along so that we make sure that what we're applying for and that we're, we're going to recover will not affect our funding in the future.
So that instruction-related technology, that increase is directly related to anticipation of dealing with COVID throughout the beginning of next school year, is that right?
Not, there's, not just that, but no, that, if we have something that we're going to invest in anyways, let me see, I guess. I will get those for you, I will have it right in front of me. I'll, I'll answer that question a little bit later, I can bring it up on my screen. So student and staff support, the, the main increase there is, is in technology. The next one is system administration. The main increase in that section is we have some clerical costs that will, that are offset by SAD 33. We actually have our payroll person actually doing payroll at SAD 33 once a week. So the expenses are here, we'll recover from SAD 33. We have, and then here's where the extra legal costs for both the Madawaska and the Valley Unified, their share of the Valley Unified costs are in here. School administration is an increase of about 10,000. And that's the clerical that wasn't hired until the budget was created last year. So the, the difference is, is looking like a, a larger increase in, than that person's actually going to receive as a raise. Student transportation, I've adjusted the salaries and hours to reflect that, you know, our bus drivers and our custodians are actually spending more time doing than what they had reported before we had the time clock system. Facilities maintenance is 36,000. That includes a 25,000 contingency, the increase in the utilities, mainly electricity. And we also have a loan for, we're going to be building a vestibule at Madawaska Elementary School through a school revolving renovations fund grant that has been approved. And this is just the first year loan payment. And Giselle can speak to that.
Yeah. This is, school revolving loan fund was offered by the Department of Education. It has not happened, I don't know if it's been 10 years since they've offered this. We applied for a security vestibule at the elementary school. And if you need to know why we did that for that particular reason, we can talk about that too. I know that Paul is here for safety and we've had issues. We've had to hire local police at times when we knew that there were custody issues with our students. The school has been built 25, 26 years ago with a central office in the middle of the building. And so when people come in, they have a long way to go. So that needs to be fixed with a security vestibule. So we applied, the State Department will pay a major portion of that loan. The cost for our, our upgrade is, I believe, 100 or 100 and something thousand. We will end up paying 50%, 49% of that based on our ED 279 levels. And so we then go through the main bond bank, borrow the money. We get it interest-free for five years. So the amount that's put into the budget, I believe, is just about $10,000 for the first year's payment. But again, it's a loan through the main bond bank for five years, interest-free.
The next cost center is your school lunch program. And this includes the regular program and the extra 14 weeks. And the final cost center is the continuing ed program with a slight increase of 10,000. For a total grand budget, including all cost centers of 7,809,727, which reflects a 6.3% increase in the expenditure side as compared to last year's budget amount. If we exclude continuing ed and school lunch, it's a 5% increase of about 347,000. The next sheet is your, yes?
I have a question on sheet D. What was the label for that sheet? Do I label it?
Oh, I call it the programs within cost center. Summary by programs within cost center.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yes.
On the student transportation on, I guess it's page three of your D section. You mentioned that was because of the time clock.
It's, it's, it's one factor. Let me just see here my bus drivers.
I, I thought you had mentioned it was captured on sheet C.
Yeah, it is captured on sheet, sheet C. It's captured on the third line from the top.
Right, but the totals are different, so I know it's a different.
Yeah, it may not be the total increase. What I did is I, I gave you a primary increase in that line. I've got an increase of about 11,000. There's also an increase of about 1,500 with the salary benefits. So when you increase salaries, your FICA, your social security, your MFRS. And then there's also an increase of about 1,600 on utilities, either bus garage or, yeah, it has to be bus garage or pertaining to that area. And then I've got small increases of about 1% on the heating oil, gasoline and diesel. Materials of about 500 and equipment 900. And the bus is coming in a thousand dollars higher. So the small increases throughout different line items in that category. What I indicate in that, in that red text is your primary increase in that cost center. So if we go to sheet E, that's your funding stream. So I identify every area of revenue that comes in to offset this budget. And the very last line that I fill in is the additional local. And if you look at that sheet, that's the, the number and it's, it's highlighted in blue. So I fill in all the other lines first and first we look at the carry forward. Well, at the, when we typically do these budgets in April or May, you're still kind of. Well, at the, when we typically do these budgets in April or May, you're still kind of guessing. And normally, at this time of year, I have a really good idea. But this is a COVID-19 year, so my crystal ball is a little blurry. What we are able to, to look at is we do have, we've had fewer sub-teachers. We've had fewer substitute personnel in. We've traveled less downstate for sports and, and staff, professional development, whatnot. So I'm confident that we, we do have the $212,000 needed to bring this budget down to zero. So that's the one that I'm confident in. As a total number, I really don't know yet. We'll, as soon as we kind of wrap up these budgets, that's what I focus on in the next three weeks. But I'm confident that we have enough carryforward because we've had these reduced expenses this particular year to bring in forward and use against this next year's budget. The school lunch itself is its own little bubble. It needs to live by itself, so it has its own carryforward. And the $75,000 reflects that, in, those are some of the revenues for the summer lunch program that we're bringing forward. And then the continuing education, we're anticipating a small carryforward there, about $10,000. So that's the cash balance, the, the total cash balance between those three types of expenses are 200, just under $298,000. Local revenue, the, the, the funding comes to us from the Department of Education through what we call the ED 279. The ED 279 is a formula that, that the, and he's got it on, on screen. It's a formula that, that the department uses to distribute the funds available at the state level. So every school district, for every public school district in Maine, is run through this formula to distribute these funds. It takes into account your, your enrollments. It takes into account the grades of your enrollments. Takes into account your guidance, your library, your health, and, so it runs it through the formula. It takes into account your average salary for the area of the state that you're in. It's got all kinds of, of criteria that it runs through. What it doesn't take into account is your true cost of delivering and picking up your kids. It doesn't take into account the age of your buildings, where your buildings are located, what the, so there's the, this is basically what we refer to as the very minimum that it should cost you to provide education in your district. It does not fund anywhere near what it truly costs when you've got the, your, your specific challenges for each district. But it, it guarantees that you're going to receive some funding. And then it also, once it determines an amount, it then looks at the state valuation for your particular town or towns that make up your school district, and then assesses what, of the total cost, what the share should be at the local before the state will kicking any funds. So we refer to this as the ED 279, and there's a local share and a state share. So in this section, this first section, the EPS local allocation is a required amount that Madawaska has to contribute in order to get the state share of this funding formula. So the, the amount this year is $2,559,386. And it's an, it's a slight decrease, so the state is saying you can spend a little less required local funds this year, and we'll see later that they've actually contributed a little more on the state side. Additional local funds, once, this is the last number I plugged in, once identified all my other revenues. We're looking at where we'd need $1,076,297 of additional local funds to balance this budget. The school nutrition program, this is your regular school lunch. So if we go into school and we provide the same program that we did last year, we would need $60,000 from local funds to run our program the way we were running last year. Last year, we were requiring $114,000. We were able to bring it down to $60,000. And continuing education will require a little more to provide a little bit better ser, a little, I think $10,000 more of service, they'll require $19,000 from locals for that program. Tuition and fees, you have Grand Isle tuitions, and you have unorganized territories at tuition students. So when I look at the number of students coming in, you have a few, a couple of fewer students, so you will collect about $29,000 less in tuition. They contribute $5,000 towards the superintendent, and superintendent for Grand Isle is Giselle. They contribute for the special ed director and the clerical services for the special ed. They contribute towards two ed tech salaries, and they contribute towards the special ed, the speech, the OT, those kinds of services. They contribute $1,000 towards continuing education program. Unorganized territories, you currently have two students that are attending from unorganized territories, and the tuition for those students will be, you'll collect about $20,000. We anticipate that registrations through the continuing ed program will be slightly decreased this year. So instead of collecting $7,500, they anticipate collecting about $4,000. And that's primarily due to the inability to bring people in, until probably a little bit later in the fall than normal. And state education clients, these are reimbursements that we're able to get through the state, and we anticipate a little bit better there, $12,000. So those are the tuition and the fees that we anticipate collecting. Food service, this is your normal program. The current summer meal program, the parents don't have to pay anything. The, the, the state reimburses us for the meals regardless of whether there's a free reduced or the parents are full pay. Everybody's getting those meals for free. So in the event that we go back to the normal food service program, then we would be, again, charging the parents that should be paying, so I anticipate that to be $70,000. Sales and general revenue, that is the use of our buildings. And also the $12,005 reflects the cost that we'll recover from the payroll services we provide to SAD 33. So the expenses are on the expense side in the, in the system administration, and the revenue against it is, is here. Time Warner Cable, that is actually another self-sustaining fund that needs to be kept separate. Last year, $30,000 was applied towards the revenue. It really shouldn't be, it should be standalone, and the revenues carry forward and are spent only in that. So 30, so there, I, there's no revenues for that program that offsets the budget because there's no expenses spent in the budget for Time Warner, that service. Is that this channel 16?
It's channel 16.
Channel 16, yeah. Oh, sorry, the, the, the $12,5 was for general use of buildings, sorry. The, the $11,000 below is, that's what we're going to recover from SAD 33 payroll. E-rate?
I was just going to say that the Time Warner, I don't know, could you explain why it is zeroed out this year?
Just that it's self-sustaining, there's no expenses, so shouldn't, we shouldn't be using any revenues towards it. E-rate, some of the technology costs that were in the question that you asked earlier is a, is network support services that are contracted out. We've applied, the E-rate program, I don't know if you're familiar with it. It is a program through USAC, which is the United States Agriculture. It has nothing to do with agriculture, but it is. And it's a program that allows us to apply for certain programs or services that we're providing for technology, such as cabling, network services, or support and whatnot. And they will, if you, if you can apply, and if you're successful, they reimburse based on your free and reduced population. So based on the free and reduced population from Madawaska, you would be entitled to a 70% reimbursement rate. So this $22,400 is 70% reimbursement of a contracted service that we've put in the, the budget for network services. So that's part of the increase that we referred to earlier in the technology, in the instructional technology.
And the remaining of that balances for?
I'll, I'll get you the answer.
Okay.
My, my memory for details is not there when I'm dealing with that many. Then the last section is state revenue, the EPS funding allocation, that $2,931,526. When it runs through the formula, and this is the state share, and the local share was at $2,559. $2,931 is the state share this year. It's $189,954 higher than last year's amount. So we're getting more state funding. The regionalized efficiency assistance, it recognizes that we are now part of Val Unified Education Service Center, and by joining that Val Unified, we are getting additional funding from the state for that. Districts that did not join or consolidate with neighbors or with other districts are getting zero in that line. So we're getting an extra $20,000 for being a member of Val Unified. The adult edge subsidy for this year is $26,896. The lunch subsidy, this is what we anticipate on a normal year, this is what we collect for the meals that we provide to students. And then the, the bottom one, the $109,560, that's the funds that I anticipate getting for the, those extra 14 weeks. The expenses of $109,560 are showing on the expense side, and this is the revenue side. The net effect is zero to the locals. And Medicaid reimbursement is through the special ed department and is services that we provide to our students, and we get reimbursed, so that's $17,000. So in total, we've identified that if we have a budget of $7,809,727, this is where the revenues are coming from to offset all the costs. Legally, I cannot go with a different number for expenses and revenues. I have to show that we can clearly support the level of budget that we're asking for our public, from our public. And the very last sheet, and I refuse to put an F on the, on a, on the mil rate sheet that says a zero increase to the locals. That's why I called it mil instead of the F sheet. And it translates to a slight decrease in mil rate because evaluation changed a little bit, but it's a $0 increase to the locals for this budget. We know that our locals are, it, it's a hard, it's a hard sell. And we knew that as soon as COVID-19 hit, that there's no way that we could even ask for next year's dollar.
The one question that still remains for me is the ED 279, the last one I saw, which I'm sure I'm not up to date, was from January. Is that, is that when this number was put out in January?
January.
And does that change? Like it, on, online, it said proposed, so is this just a proposed number? Can it change? The state share, can it go down? And?
Every year, the state share can go down. It typically doesn't.
So that leaves me with the question of, this is a proposed number. Due to COVID, they're probably delayed giving you the correct number. What then happens if this goes down $300,000? What do, what do we do?
Whenever they put it out, so you can see it in yellow at the bottom, they call it preliminary.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah, and they do that every year, so this is not a different year. And the preliminary becomes the, the actual, I don't know when they, they do that.
It varies from year to year.
I have never seen final on there.
No, I think they stay preliminary until the next year.
Yeah, I see them in the following year, but.
To answer her question, in 2008, there was a curtailment. That was the last time there was a curtailment. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the way they did it is they took your monthly payment that you get for general education from the state department. They didn't pay till June, and then they put it into July, they pushed it off.
And then there's federal funds to offset some of the losses in the district. So it's in the CARES Act, we had some federal funds to offset it. Like I said, our crystal ball is as good as it ever was. It's, when it comes to state funding, we're not getting vibes from this, from the, the Department of Ed that this will be a curtailed amount, but they don't know, they won't know until later in the summer.
This is our monthly payment schedule. It shows you how much, you know, the department will get per month from this. And what they described in 2008, that June payment never happened. It's always a fear, but, you know, there is money for schools in this new HERO Act that's, you know, that, that's going before the Senate, and that might offset some of the shortfalls for, for, you know, what the states have. Nobody knows, but we have to prepare a budget as if, you know, school is going to be.
And, and what we do is, we don't spend everything July 1. You, you, you spend conservatively until you're, as, as much as short as you can, and you're going to get the funding that you, that you're, that you're anticipating from the state. We do most of our summer projects or our building projects in May and June, towards the end of the school year. So in the event that we do have a curtailment through the year, that those projects may be delayed and just not done. That's why the majority of those projects are done later in the year. So whatever we can, you know, we fulfill what we need for the classroom. You get your classrooms ready, you make sure that you can educate those kids. Anything that can wait and that is not safety or security-related tends to wait until May and June. And then we determine, can we release these funds? And by then, you also know, is your electricity the cost? And, you know, how are your utilities coming in? Is it, is it a 2008 snow year where it's, it's a lot more? Or is it a, you know, a 2010 when you had significantly less snow and less cold? Those costs are known by March, April, and then you deter, you determine whether or not you can, you can perform everything that you had planned on, or if you need to make adjustments. And I will get you that technology answer.
Our first round of the budget that we proposed, that we presented to the, the, the board members here, I believe, was a 7% increase or 9% increase? I think it was 9. So we've been chopping away at this every time, and we knew that as close to zero was going to be our, our goal. The fact that we could get to zero, it's amazing. And, and we only got to that literally today. So, you know, it's.
I hate to say it, but COVID-19 actually helped something. One little piece, but it, it allowed us to be able to bring these costs. It's the carryforward from, from the savings of not traveling and not in the sports and substitute teachers.
While she's looking for that, I'd like to just say a word on EPS. Lucy talked about the EPS being the minimum level that the state recommends for funding, and I did bring up what it does not cover, just so that I can share that with you. EPS does not provide actual costs of operating expenses, plus full costs of your, of expenses like substitute teachers, supplies of equipment, professional development, athletics, co-curricular expenses, system administration support, operation of plant and pupil transportation. It underestimates inflationary costs. It underestimates salaries in ranges. And additional local funds don't cover if you have your loans, if we're doing like the elementary school vestibule, those types of things. We have a loan here with the, Lucy alluded to it, with the biomass. I just looked it up. The last payment is in November of 2028. So we still have eight years to pay on this biomass. So those things are not covered typically in EPS.
Are there any other questions from the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I'm getting your technology.
Do you have some more that you're, shall we proceed?
No, I think I've probably given you more than you wanted to see.
I don't think we need to rush back into the.
I see it's real soon.
It's not going to be easy, no matter what budget you review right. It makes it extremely difficult when everything's based off a proposal, or, and then you have that unknown out there. And so it's like that through here, it's like that through, you know, town budget or even your budget at home. So it makes it really hard to make the best decision that you can. And then if something happens in two or three months down the road, like Laura was talking about, how, how do you respond to that? How do you fix that on the other side? And I don't know if that's happened in a, in a, in a, in a budget here in the past, or what that looked like and how that got resolved. I know you mentioned a little bit, but I guess that would turn in the back of my head, you know? What if something does change and it comes up $200,000 or $300,000 short? Is there somewhere where we're confident we can, we can absorb that somewhere without having to go back to the taxpayer, or, you know what I mean?
A thing that I, you know, I try to press upon the three boards that we. A thing that I, you know, I try to press upon the three boards that we speak to is that every school district, every town in the state is in the same, in the nation, right? It's planning for the unknown, and how do you do that when it's so unknown, more than ever? The saving grace is we're all in the same place. And, you know, I think we do ourselves better by setting ourselves with a plan. You ask if we have a plan for finding, you know, money.
If it was there, you'd already take it out.
There's money to, you know, we can freeze a budget in a certain month when we have, when we know some curtailments are going to come. We can do that, it's going to be painful and hard. But we would hope that there's a state response that will, you know, not make that happen, or a federal response. I don't know, it's a scary place.
But I think it goes beyond all of that, because I think even our personal budgets at home, I mean, well, in my household, we budget. But even our jobs are unknown right now, are they going to be there? So, but you don't stop living because of the fear of the unknown. You have to move forward. And our job here as a board is to educate children. We can't just put them on pause for a few months and say, well, we're not quite sure what's coming, we can't move forward. That's our job, we have to educate children. So it's all around. It's not just school board, the town board, it's our personal lives. But you have to choose to have a plan and move forward.
I don't think we've ever seen, though, a change in the ED 279 of 200 and 300,000.
I don't know what the...
I don't ever remember seeing that, but I don't think, I agree with Tammy that we have to have something in place and we have to go to referendum and we have to have a budget.
Oh, that's, that's, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that you would have to have a backup plan. I'm more or less just kind of speaking out loud. And I appreciate the effort to at least propose a budget with no increase in a local tax dollar at this point. Given the unknown, how would you ever know, right?
You take that sheet B, you know, and you look at that first line, which is your total salaries. You know, our first, our first effort or our main effort was to work with our people about, okay, this is going to be a difficult year. So we worked with our teacher unit and agreed that we're not going to give you a salary increase, you know, this year. We're going to move you on the steps because that's, you know, contractually, you're owed that. But we're not going to increase that scale by any percentage. Your administrators are not going to get a rate, they're going to get cost of living, just because, you know, it's... So we're really working with the people because that is the majority of the salary. So there's a lot of work that's gone into it.
Yeah, that was not an easy sell, also with the teachers, because Giselle and I were negotiating with them. You know, that's a hard pill to swallow, because every teacher that's not on a step is getting nothing. So, you know, it was not an easy thing to have them accept. I don't think they accepted it with, but because they wanted to help out, they said, okay, we'll go along with it for now because of all the unknowns.
We're still in negotiations with our ESP contract, which is your support personnel, which includes your secretaries, your ed techs, your custodians. That is not finalized right now, but we have proposed the same thing. So...
It's good to have this conversation and put that information out there, because, and I'm sure you guys feel it. I, Chris and I talk a lot, and there's been a lot of pressure on him and myself, knowing that we were on this committee, to expect a decrease from you guys. So that came to zero and that you've had the conversations about the wages is kind of good. You know, I'm glad Jason's here and it's getting out there that they did accept that, you know? I guess, I mean, that's just where the hesitation is.
I think, Laurie, one of the things too is that, you know, when we think about our population, our local townspeople, and we can come to them with a zero mil increase. I think that they, you know, that would be palatable for them, instead of saying, well, we have at least a 1% or 2%. Because we've done a lot of cutting corners and, and of course, like Lucy said, with the COVID, it's allowed us some places to be able to carry some over. So it's allowed us to be able to say to the townspeople, you're not getting the increase in taxes this year. And I think that's something that's really important for our population.
And it's good for them to hear that, like the teachers gave, because that's what a lot of people are asking for.
Exactly, and then, you know, and the negotiations will be going on with the other staff now, but that's to come.
Since I've been on the Finance Committee for a few years, this is the first year that we've had a zero mil budget.
That's correct. In at least five years, I can tell you that.
I've been on for eight now, and this is the first year that we've been able to come up with a zero mil.
The cost of everything goes up every year, right? So you have to get creative on how to avoid that from happening.
But we've also, we've also, as a matter of us, we've done a lot of improvements in our schools. Stuff that was put on the back burner all the time. I mean, stuff that wasn't even looked at for 25 years. We can't do that in our personal households. So we've done a lot of support projects to try to bring our schools up to where they need to be.
And you can't take the Band-Aid approach forever.
Exactly, and that's where we were headed. We were just ignoring all these things, and then all of a sudden, I mean, we got leaky roofs, we've got, I mean, all the stuff. That we had to spend money to repair our stuff. And now hopefully, we can do a little bit every year, so costs is not so drastic.
It took us, it took us a good five, six years to get our head above water.
And that's from, from A to C, we're talking a bus with four, five removed immediately on the first year. So we've come a long way.
So are we prepared to make motions on accepting the budget?
Yeah.
Crystal has a question.
Who?
Crystal has a question.
Oh, Chris has a question.
Chris has a question.
Lucy's working on it.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's in 10,000 places. Of course, you'd have to ask that one question.
Of course, you know.
Okay, so we do have equipment, so iPads and technology. We have iPad leases, so we have new purchase of iPads with lower rates, and then we have regular iPads that we... We have workstation replacements. There's significant amount of software that goes with, we even have software for textbooks now, that we planted our textbooks without us having to have them print, coffee. Komodo and those, we have a library software. Actually, that's something that didn't mention. We now have the capability that a book in Fort Kent can be located by looking at the library here. The software connects our libraries together so that you can share resources. And that primarily was funded through Fed Ex Grant and is now part of our budget. Wireless access points and those kinds of upgrades.
I'm good.
Document cameras, batteries, I can keep going.
No, I just, I wasn't sure, I just wasn't sure if that was an increase in anticipation that we may not be in school and that we would have to go out and purchase equipment solely for the purpose of homeschooling versus not, or if it was to upgrade or purchase new that we already currently have, that's what my...
Nope, this is reinforcing our backbone.
Yep, it makes sense.
And we do, when you're reinforcing the backbone, it's really not related to COVID. It's related to, we're operating a school system on a normal basis. So it's not something that we would take out of our budget, we would...
One other thing that can be mentioned is, and this is good for you to take back to your people as well. From our standpoint of our buses, we had a total disaster that we were looking at. We had buses that the state police were telling us they cannot go back on the road. And we now have buses that are all in good shape. And Giselle has a plan to keep adding to the bus line and keep stuff current.
We keep a rotation going now, so that when we purchase one, the next year, the state will reimburse a portion of it, and we use that to purchase the other one. One of the audience that wasn't mentioned, when you saw the few pieces that were paid by Grandile, the tuition, the ed tech. Grandile, in their last agreement that this board agreed to last year, it's a six-year contract. In that contract, they do purchase a bus for us. Our buses through Valley Unified Grants are now all equipped with grants and donations, I should say, from people in the public. We had some generous donations. Are all equipped with, is it three or four cameras each? Four cameras, I think that's required by law now, so. And sound system and radios, and we have GPS in...
GPS, we built that through the Gedsman, also two-way radio.
So some of those things were funded through grants, through Valley Unified. Our radio system for the three schools, but also with the other school units, is now all digital. So we've done a lot, some with grants, some with funding through the tuitioning communities.
We're also experiencing, or experimenting with a gas bus as opposed to a diesel, because it's less costly to operate.
We purchased one last year, a gasoline engine. And the one that we're purchasing is supposed to be today, but I haven't had a chance to order it, it'll be tomorrow or Friday. That one will also be a gasoline engine. The bus itself costs less, but it's also less to repair, to maintain, and to run.
So I'm assuming that you guys are looking for us to give you either a...
A year in a year.
A recommendation or not a recommendation from the Finance Committee. So, so bear with me, I'm new to this, so I'm assuming that we need to vote on our own to do that, or how does that...
Well, what I would do would be to entertain a motion.
Yes.
To accept the 2020, 2021 school budget in the amount of 7,809,728, including continuing ed and school lunch. And then we would have the second, and if you want more discussion, then it would be approved by the Finance Committee, so that when we go to referendum or to meeting, that the Finance Committee has approved the budget, and then it'd be approved by the school committee.
I think first, the school committee decides if they want to motion for the budget.
Yes.
And then, as you said, the Finance Committee says a yea or nay. Because in the warrant, it goes in as recommended by.
That's correct.
Now, are we, are we still bypassing town meeting and going directly to referendum?
That's our next discussion.
Yeah, Ben has spoken to the attorneys again today. Things change daily. I'm dead serious, I think Gary can say the same for the town side, but...
I had a good conversation, and we can have that, we can have a discussion during, discussion after the motion.
After the motion.
Before we get to the Finance Committee vote, we need to know if Mr. Kent can vote on the board side or the finance, and the Finance Committee side. Because without his vote, we don't have a vote.
Yeah, but Laurie's voting.
Well, and, and Giselle told us yes in the beginning, and you asked me to confirm what Gary knew, and Gary says yes. So I'm confident that they both know what they're doing, and we're fine.
But in the past, they've always hopped from one side to the next.
Yeah, they can sit there.
Like Mr. Kent votes now, and then he goes to your side to vote, just because he's a member of that committee.
We have new members, and that's a good question, but we've done it in the past.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we were going to be, we actually had a vote.
Yeah, we've done it in the past.
So can I have a motion first, then you said, from the school committee? I would entertain a motion to accept the 2020, 2021 school budget in the amount of 7,809,728, including continuing ed and school lunch amounts. I'm going to make that. Tammy moved, can I have a second? Second, Tom? Is there any more discussion from the school committee? All those in favor? And is Robert, is Robert in?
Robert, Robert...
Is he on?
He was, but he left.
Oh, he left.
He expressed his support.
Yes.
But he was having technology issues. So he sent a text, he expressed his support, sent goodwill for the Finance Committee, and he had to log out.
So we can say that it's...
You can't, he's not here, so four...
Okay, so it would be four.
Yeah.
Four and one absent.
It's not, nobody's abstaining because he's not here.
And then, then there would be a motion from the Finance Committee. You can repeat the same motion and then just...
So I would need, somebody makes a motion, I'm not going to suggest what that motion is, but if you're saying that you would like to approve the budget of 7,809,727, recommended.
I'll make that motion.
Then I'll say it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Regarding...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Regarding the next steps. So there was an executive order put out by Governor Mills, I believe, last Friday, that would allow us to bypass the public meeting because of the limit of 50 people or less for a public meeting. We could bypass that. We could have what's called a remote hearing, which is basically a period of time where we could allow the public to connect with us from Zoom or another way to connect with us digitally, ask questions about the budget. It would not be a hearing, it would just be a question-answer period. And they could, we would allow the public to voice their concerns or ask questions. And then we could move directly to referendum. If we were to choose that route, this is a sample of what the warrant would be allowing to give.
Just for the school?
Just for the school. This would be very different than what has gone in the warrants before. The voter would see all of the cost centers.
Would this be done though on Zoom?
No, no, this would be when you go to the poll, this is what your ballot would look like. As you can see, I don't know, for the general voter who hasn't followed this process, to see article lines and cost center numbers and, and essentially, you're voting on the full budget in the end, but you've got to see all this information to get to that. And then you would have to take an additional vote for, so the voter would vote for this, the voter would then vote for continuing education as a separate. I believe they would have to vote for school lunch as a separate vote. And then they would have to vote for the municipal bond bank loan as a separate vote in order to pass the entire budget. So you run the risk of the budget passing but not continuing ed, or the budget passes but not B, C, D. It's very confusing.
Can you imagine a citizen in the voting booth reading four pages?
No, I can't imagine that.
So I then, I then asked, okay, so what is a better option? And bear with me here, the better option is still kind of confusing. So the guidance is, you can, you can hold your public meeting for the budget, as we normally would. You have to remain cognizant that only 50 people can attend that meeting. The trick here, or the complication here, is that you can't refuse a voter their right to vote. So once 50 people have arrived, you can't turn the rest away and say, sorry, you can't vote. Because now you're infringing on their, their, Gary?
Ben, when you say 50 people, are you including, are you including the staff too?
The staff, then the additional people. So it might not even be 50 voters, it might be 40 or 42. But it's 50 people in the room. So what some school districts are doing is they're opening up a separate room for the overflow. So picture, we're up in the cafeteria, we count 50 people through. Once that 51st person comes to vote, we would send them here to the library. And then we would start to fill this room with up to 50 people. And then we would start to fill this room with up to 50 people. On the screen would be what's going on in the cafeteria, live streamed. And so that these people are still part of that meeting. And then you would have a mechanism for the voting, so that there's counts here and there, and ballot boxes here and there, so everyone gets their chance to vote. There's some gray with the lawyers on whether or not that is constitutionally okay. But there's just as much gray that it's perfectly fine. So they are advising districts that are doing that to go ahead and do that if you're comfortable with it, and they feel it would be okay. Now, it may be a moot point, we may not have 50 people show up for a school budget meeting. We may have just, you know, 40 or 30, and then we're fine. If that would go through and we would have the public meeting, the voters would show their support or not. If it passes at that meeting, we would go to the referendum, as we normally would, and it would be a regular referendum question. It wouldn't be this, it would be what you typically see when you go vote for the school budget.
Would you do that the same, that would be the same night?
No, no, that would be, you would have the public meeting, and then you would have to have it.
Seven or 10 days later.
Seven or 10 days afterwards.
Oh.
What are the chances between now and then that the amount of citizens at that meeting will go up from 50 to another number? Have you heard anything there?
I haven't. Gary?
Gary? The governor extended the emergency, another 30 days.
Oh yeah, it's another 30 days till July 10 now. The civil emergency.
Gary, do you have a rough average of citizens that show up for, like?
More for the town and the school, same thing.
School varies. I'd say non-controversial years, 30.
I would advise, based on the numbers, that the town and the school don't hold their meetings on the same night, just for the fact that you're not gonna have less than 50 for that, there's no shot.
Exactly.
So we have to decide, do we wanna go with the remote talking thing and this ballot? Or do we wanna go for a regular meeting at 50 with an overflow room and then have a regular referendum?
Question from the floor?
Yes.
So, Giselle, we had stopped the meeting earlier, and there's an indication that we're probably not gonna be doing this on July 14?
We won't meet, we won't, even if we try as best we can, there's no way we could post warrants by Friday.
July 14, if had you gone to the referendum, it would have been a concern in the sense that with the crowd size limitation and the polling hours, and keeping people voting for state and local elections, and then this keeping a person that moved that long would make us having a hard time. Make, it would be hard for everybody to get a chance to vote in 12 hours of voting.
Agreed.
And so.
You mean you can't get a warrant ready by Friday?
Not this kind of warrant.
No, but we, this is not the kind of warrant that we would need.
We wouldn't have time, I believe, to hold a public meeting and still.
This has to be approved 14 days in advance to the BVR, so we are 14 days before July 14. The only thing that we would not be able to do is include the main bond bank question, which would have to come at a different town meeting.
Well, Mr. Stotmyer that I spoke to today said, right now, on Wednesday of this week, your chance to post warrants for Friday and get everything ironed out is slim to now.
And he's right, because when we create our warrants and we have the legal review, it can take a few days. And I happen to know that they're booked right now, they're overwhelmed, I think, in drumming reason right now, so you're right.
I'm missing something here. Is the town meeting scheduled for the 14th?
No. It's public elections.
It was a primary election before.
The primary election, okay.
And the local, the local elections.
Okay, okay.
That's the 14th.
So originally, we were thinking maybe we could get on that, that election day.
But if, but if we had, if we had the overflow thing within the next week, would we still have time?
No, we have to post the warrant.
Yeah.
What are we today?
Today's Wednesday.
It's the 10th.
Today's the 10th, 30 days as of September, April, June. 20 more days.
Yeah.
34 days.
No, the town, this is the approval from the town. And typically, the next step is a budget hearing with the town, that's what we, and then after that, it's BVR. So it's 14 before BVR, 7 before.
34 days between now and 14.
So if we had the town meeting, the school budget town meeting before on time, then the only question would be on June 4th, or on July 14th, would be the BVR question.
Can we do that?
It.
It can be done, but it's gonna be tight.
It can, but the attorneys didn't recommend.
Why, why do we need attorneys to pass on our warrant?
In normal years, I'd say we don't. This is not a normal year. You get it wrong.
You have one company, it was explained to me, that essentially is making all of the ballots that are read electronically. And that company can't keep up for that June, that July 14th date because they just can't, so we just run the risk of it becoming very difficult based on that fact. Do we find it would be an advantage to have this on the July 14th ballot? Or do we find it would be an advantage to have a school budget referendum on its own ballot? I guess that would be the bigger question.
Well, if July 14th is election day, then you're gonna pass the school budget with two brand-new board members on it.
Question. Why can't the school budget vote be hand-counted like in years past?
It can't.
Huh?
It can't.
It can't. Ben, proceed.
So it does come to the question that Ben asked, what is advantageous for the school department's budget?
They don't wanna fail budgets, or?
Can I, can I just question something that you said earlier? So if we were going on the 14th, we would be going school budget only, we would have to go back to vote for the bond bank, is that correct?
Unless we can work some magic real quick here, but.
Well, okay, that's not gonna happen because it's COVID-19, so. So we would have to go back a second time.
You would go back if the town, they're gonna have their town meeting later? And you would add one more article, shout the town approve a $10,000 loan from main bond bank, so.
So if we had our meeting, then we'd have to go to BVR?
Only to BVR.
Only to BVR. And could BVR be done at the same time as the town meeting?
There's, I believe their town meeting will be after July 14th, the voting, correct?
So we're, our town meeting is likely going to happen after July 14th. Okay, and so your BVR is a referendum question, a secret ballot. So in other words, if you, if you're able, if you decide that you're gonna do this by town meeting, I think you still have time to get that done and satisfy the 14 days for BVR before referendum. For the July 14 election. If it takes longer, if you're not able to get it through, to satisfy the 14 days before the referendum, okay, for BVR, then your BVR referendum would happen after the July 14 election. So we'd have to have a separate referendum, referendum just for BVR. It can't happen at an open floor town meeting, it's gonna be done by referendum. So I just wanted to add that for Tom, as far as, we can't count this by hand. Clerks, you know, the election clerks can't count this by hand, but there's a lot of places, I mean, we're gonna have to make sure we did the count right, there's a lot of.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use this, I find this far too complicated for the average John Doe voter to go in and read everything.
But let's come back to Ben's question.
Yep. I would, I would, I I would think that we should go with the informational meeting and the overflow.
In here. Right.
Yes.
To have that town meeting.
Yes.
We will do it.
And that would explain this.
Correct.
Correct.
So when do we want our, when do we want the budget on the ballot? Do we want it on July 14 during the other election, or do we want it a little bit later when we have our own? Our own?
Because when we put it on the ballot, we don't need to put it this complicated.
Not if we have the meeting that Tom just.
Not if we have the meeting before. To me, that's what would make sense.
I think so, so long as the citizens understand that it's a 0% mill increase.
Well, if we have, when we have the informational meeting, that's something that can be discussed.
But not all those people come to that meeting then.
Well, it'll be on, it'll be televised, a lot of people watch channel WWL.
No, and can't we get the information into the local newspapers?
We could put it in the paper. It should be a highlight, there's a 0 mill increase, it should be a highlight.
Well, and put on the headlines of Valley Unified. I don't know, what, I've said what I think. I would like to do the informational thing because people are gonna have questions, and I think we can answer those questions to satisfy them. This here is gonna confuse the heck out of everybody, I don't, it even confuses me, I wouldn't wanna look at this in a ballot box.
We're not gonna do this, we're gonna have a public meeting.
There's two questions going on.
Yeah, so I think we've agreed that, so we're not, we're not doing the.
I'll make a motion, we have the public hearing.
Perfect.
Overflow hearing.
Yeah. Okay, question number one. Is everybody in favor of that? We don't need a motion for that, do we?
For the, for the record, if you.
Yes.
You want it, or? Can I have a motion that we will do it publicly?
I made the motion before.
Oh, you made, oh, sorry.
Second by Louie.
Second by Louie.
Oh, I didn't even hear that.
Turn them on.
All those, any more discussion? No, all those in favor? Okay.
When, when do you want the referendum vote?
I think it would be nice if you could do it on the 14th.
And that gets back to what, and that gets back to what I said, so the lawyers say that's going to be very difficult. I could push it tomorrow, I say, hey, make it happen.
Why would it be difficult?
If we're gonna hand count.
BVR is gonna have to be hand, it's already too late to have that put on, our ballots are kinda being printed right now, so. We will, BVR will need hand counting.
I understand all that, all I'm conveying is a message that I heard today from the person.
He's going from the advice of the lawyer.
Who prepares the warrant for us.
We don't know what it is, there's a reason. We're paying them, they're giving us advice, we can turn against it or we can take it, what do we wanna do?
We'll push it, if you want it on the 14th, we'll push it.
It makes no difference to me when we have it.
Right. As long as we have that town meeting, it makes no difference.
Who prints our ballots? We can print them.
I know I'm not on this board, but can I? Gary, didn't you just say, though, like, if we tried to do this all together, it's gonna be hard? Or is it just that this big ballot, we can't do all of it?
Right, this is not coming through.
No, if we were gonna do this by referendum on July 14th, that would be difficult. But they're gonna do a town meeting, and the referendum they're referring to is budget validation, it's that one line article that says it's the catch-all.
It's that one thing?
14th?
Huh? The wishes of the board.
Historically, have you had a more favorable school budget vote when it was a general election? Or when it was specific for the school budget?
I think it's more specific for school. Oh, I think.
I don't know, it's been, yeah, I think it's been more.
Because at a 0% increase, if the budget fails, that makes things very difficult, because it's already zero.
In the past, when it has not been favorable, was because the school budget was asking for an increase. The difference here is that this is a 0 increase to the local taxpayer, 0 from last year. So that's the difference. So, you know, will people understand enough out there that the school budget keeps the mill, it's part of the mill rate flat? You get more voters on July 14 than you would on your own referendum, so that's the difference.
I'm indifferent. I, I mean, I'll speak my mind, I guess I'm not a big restator, so if the advice from the lawyer came in that it's gonna be tight, I'm gonna chew on that one, but it's up to God, so I'm indifferent.
A lot of communities of this helps are going after July 14.
Oh, yeah.
The school in Grand Isle and the town in Grand Isle are after July 14. They're looking at late July, early August.
Does it really matter with our budget, whether it's the 14th or later?
It only matters if the perception is, where will it pass more easily? That's the only thing that's being discussed, so.
But then if you have it after July 14th, you can still have, you can still have your informational meeting, but then.
We have to.
Yeah, but then you don't have to press it to have it out. You inform them, and then you do your voting, whenever the lawyer says we can vote.
I think we don't wanna be appearing that we're gonna be trying to pull something over on anybody. I mean, let's, let's put our cards out on the table, if it looks like we're playing a shell game here, that's not gonna go over well. If we're standing by our budget, and the finance committee's standing by that budget.
Listen, I mean, your budget's your budget.
Your budget's our budget, then, you know, we've gotta sell it, and hey, they agree or they don't agree, that's all there is to it, let's not, you know, let's not do smoke in mirrors here.
It's a 0% increase, whether you do it the 14th or the 25th.
That's right.
Budget's your budget, so. If you're taking a risk on the 14th, I mean, I know a lot on that portion. Wouldn't press the issue, it's already enough to deal with.
Well, if there's no rush to get it, to get it passed after we inform the people, then we don't need to look at the 14th. Gary, do you have something?
So you guys, are you talking about having a town meeting before the 14th, and then having BVR on 14th? Is that what you're talking about?
We're discussing is, that is one option.
Okay. And if that doesn't happen, and your town meeting would happen after 14, and BVR would happen somewhere thereafter?
The town meeting could happen still before the 14th, because there's 30 days or so still, so. But not in a rush for the 14th.
Let's get the informational meeting taken care of and do the vote after that.
Okay, so we have time limits. If you want the informational meeting, which is called the school budget hearing, that time between that meeting and the BVR has to be according to law.
Okay.
So I think right now, what you need to tell us is, do you want the BVR on the 14th or later? I think that's the question, and then we set town meeting accordingly.
Do it later.
It will give us more time to push out more fast with people.
Yeah.
Were you talking, were we talking doing the BVR on the 14th? Or doing? Well, we have the board on the budget, and then we have the BVR.
Yes.
Right, well, you have the town meeting, and then the BVR.
So if we do the informational meeting.
Which is the town meeting.
Which is the town meeting. Okay, then there's no, there's no rush on the BVR.
Well, depending on when we schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll look at some dates.
So the decision is not to rush to July 14th?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
It has to be accepted at the town meeting before it moves to BVR.
Right. But if we're aiming for the BVR for July 14th, we really have to rush and get.
I was thinking we're aiming for the BVR. I'm not aiming for the BVR. It must have been lost somewhere.
We're aiming for the BVR. That's too fast.
So what we can do is we'll discuss a date for the school budget hearing, which is the informational meeting.
Yes.
And we'll count our days, follow the law, and then schedule the BVR. We'll work with Gary on that. Yeah, we'll need to get them signed by the board prior to posting. Right. We typically, in the past couple of years, have called a 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM meeting to have you sign the warrants. But, and then we give it to select. Soon to be.
Okay. We're set with that?
That's it.
Do I need a motion?
To adjourn.
To adjourn, okay, great. Motion to adjourn. Now, Louie, you've got to adjourn or talk? Okay.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you very much, you guys.